That's a stunner. Shirley sounds crazy. This is a crazy business.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I apologize for running a little bit late there, but we've got a lot of fun guests here this evening, and we had a little bit of logistics we needed to work through. So we're going to call the meeting to order for February 2nd, 2015. And first on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. We're going to be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Ashton Harris and Nicholas Hyde. You guys will come forward, please.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful, thank you. You may be seated. How are you guys?
Good.
Wonderful. I'm glad you're able to be with us. Ashton, let's start with you. All right, why don't you tell us your name and what grade you're in and where you go to school.
I'm Ashton Harris. I'm in 5th grade and I go to Richmond Elementary.
Wonderful. And who's your teacher?
Mr. Justice.
Mr. Justice?
Yes.
Wonderful. What do you like to study? What's your favorite topic?
Math.
Math? Very nice. There are engineers in the back of the room. They're smiling. That's good. That's good. What do you like to do when you're not at school?
Dance and basketball.
Dance and basketball? Okay. Do you have any brothers or sisters?
Yes, two brothers.
Two brothers? Are they the delight of your life?
I don't think that ever occurred to me.
I think you're right. I think you're right. And who brought you tonight?
My mother.
Your mother, and what's her name?
Lacy Harris.
Lacy Harris. Thanks, Lacy, for bringing her. And just so everyone can know, we also -- I know that last year was an exciting year for you to move to Stillwater, and I want to thank you and your family for the sacrifices because it's her dad is the varsity baseball coach which won the first state baseball title for Stillwater in 50 years. So thank you for the work you do for Stillwater. All right. Nicholas, how are you?
Good.
Wonderful. Where do you go to school and what grade are you in?
I go to school at Richmond Elementary and I'm in 5th grade.
Wonderful. And who's your teacher?
Mr. Justice.
Mr. Just both of -- wow, he's a brave man having both of you in class. So you guys have got a fun story for tomorrow. What do you like to study?
Science.
Science. The engineer smiled again. That's good. What do you like to do when you're not in school?
Play baseball and football.
Baseball and football. Do you have any brothers or sisters?
No.
No brothers or sisters. And who brought you tonight?
My mother.
And her name?
Denise Hyde.
Wonderful. Thank you for bringing him. All right. Counselors, do you guys have any questions?
No, thank you.
Wonderful. I do have one more question for you. Do you like white chocolate or milk chocolate?
Milk.
Milk?
Milk.
Milk, okay. Hang on a second.
Would you got a stash back there?
Private stash back there.
I've never seen that before.
You haven't done the Pledge of Allegiance for me.
That's really bad thing.
Huh?
It's a bad thing for me to know that it has chocolate.
I don't know why I just did it.
That's an interesting view.
Okay, we have two proclamations this evening, and our first one is with Sister Cities. Our first proclamation has to do with our Sister Cities Council. Whereas the State of Oklahoma in the United States and the Prefecture of Kyoto, Japan established a sister state agreement in 1985, followed by the establishment of a sister cities partnership between the city of Stillwater and the city of Kamioka on November 3rd, 1985. And whereas the agreement resulted in the establishment of the Sister Cities Council that has coordinated numerous cultural, educational, business, and governmental exchanges between Stillwater and Kamioka, and has offered many opportunities to develop relationships by the city of Stillwater, Oklahoma State University, and the Stillwater Public Schools. And whereas the ties of friendship have grown strong between the people of Stillwater and Kamioka through 30 years of exchanges, and programs and individuals have been recognized by Sister Cities International with a number of awards for outstanding achievement. Now therefore, I, Mayor John Bartley, and the Stillwater City Council, in cooperation with the Sister Cities Council, to hereby declare, and invite, and encourage the community to be involved in programs and events of a time of celebration, looking forward, looking back, honoring the 30th anniversary of the Sister Cities Partnership, Stillwater, Oklahoma, Kamioka, Japan, November 3rd, 2015.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council, for this recognition and proclamation. It has indeed been a good 30 years that we've had this relationship with Kamioka, and we look forward to many more years. And a continued great relationship with that wonderful city. Thank you.
Stephanie wants pictures.
That's fair. That's fair. Okay, now we've got scout time. Oh my, look at all our scouts. You guys want to all come forward? Everyone come up here.
Yeah.
Put that one on.
We'll survive.
Yeah, who's going to sue us?
Yeah.
Boy Scouts.
Yeah.
They have colorful people.
One step forward, everyone. One step forward. Perfect. Perfect. Okay, Scout Week. Appreciate everyone being here. I'm not about to try and list off all the troops that are represented here tonight because there are so many here in Stillwater and so many represented here tonight. So we're going to kind of sum it all up with this wonderful proclamation. Whereas the Boy Scouts of America was founded in 1910 and will celebrate its 105th anniversary this month. And whereas the Boy Scouts are America's largest youth organization. And whereas scouting teaches timeless values including the importance of good character and civic responsibility. And whereas Stillwater is home to numerous Cub Scout packs, Boy Scout troops, and Explorer posts. And whereas many leaders of this community are former scouts. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize this organization for its contributions to the city of Stillwater. Now therefore, I, John Bartley, Mayor of the city of Stillwater, to hereby proclaim the week of February 8th through 14th, 2015, as Boy Scout Week. All right, great job, guys. Who gets the proclamation?
Parker. Good job.
know it's Boy Scout Week, but I greatly admire what you do and the time you commit serving the community and helping those boys grow up. And I just admire what you're doing and I appreciate it very much.
I know.
I know. You cleared a room.
I'm going to leave with them.
All right. That's going to take us down to our consent docket, and there are two items on the consent docket. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent docket?
No, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. That's approved five to nothing, and I would like to commend Dr. Peak and his staff on the pavement management system. One of those items was getting that going forward again this year and that step. So thank you guys very much for that system. And we did not have anyone sign up to speak, and so that's going to take us down to general orders. Proposed amendment to terms and conditions of the hydrant meter program for bulk water.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Dana Maddox, Customer Service Manager, and I have before your report on changing the process of how we sell bulk water to our customers. So those are our customers who are needing pretty large sums of water in a fairly quick manner. So currently, we have about 41 customers that have a hydrant meter checked out to them. They attach that to a hydrant meter when they're ready to use it. Then once a month, they send us a reading or are supposed to send us a reading so we can process them for billing. That demand for those meters has increased greatly over the last couple of years, and we are just seeing, having more and more problems with that process. So a lot of the meters are starting to come back damaged, and we're having issues of them getting us a meter reading on a monthly basis for billing. Currently, are we going to show them the meters or?
Wherever you want.
No. So we have a couple of meters to show you. We had two that actually came back today, both of which had quite a bit of damage to them. And so if you're interested, we did --
They're right here up in front.
Oh, I know where they were.
The, yeah.
Now, how much does something -- how much does -- how much does it cost us to buy one of those?
About $1,200 for just the meter currently.
Which is that whole?
Yeah, the meter.
The whole thing?
No, no, no. The other parts are in chest.
This is what we would check out. Someone came in and this would be a new meter assembly, and it's approximately $1,200 for this meter.
That whole piece of equipment right there?
Yeah.
Okay.
So a meter and a backflow for better.
And the valve, this is the valve that the customer is supposed to use. They're not some -- we don't want them to use our fire hydrant valve. There's on top of the fire hydrant, there's a nut, and you put a wrench on it and you turn and you open and plug the fire hydrant. Now, one of the problems that we've been seeing is we're getting damaged from that. And so Dana will talk to you about our new proposal for our program that's going to really eliminate a lot of the damage that we're seeing. And it's not -- you also see the $1,200 number come back in just a little bit too.
Yeah. So it's the one that's damaged, like the glass is broken, which is kind of hard to see. But the backflow for better has all the valves broken off of it, and the handles, that was completely destroyed. That it didn't shut it off anymore. Basically, what this company had done was just totally removed the backflow for better when you moved it up to the hydrant anyway, so.
So we were losing that for cash into our water system because they had just went ahead and decided to go ahead and just disconnect it because it was beautiful water.
Help me understand what customers would need this service. It wouldn't be a typical business in Stillwater?
Mostly what we've seen coming in lately is the oil companies wanting to come in and fill up their tanker trucks. So they just want to pull up to the hydrant. We do have some smaller companies. There's a pest company that fills up, I guess, a water tank when he gets ready to go out and spray the yards. We have some people when they get ready to fill a pool. Construction companies is basically who has them from us.
Construction, road construction, oftentimes they need moisture in doing the compaction of dirt construction.
Yeah, or if they're putting down sod and they need to, large quantities to water their sod, they'll come and get those. The other issue we're having at the hydrant meter or at the hydrant itself is because whoever -- you can just, they're supposed to call the water department before they hook up to help prevent water pressure issues, but they typically don't. And we'll also send damages to the hydrant, and we don't really know who to bill that to because when we start questioning, since anybody can just go there and hook their meter up to it, we don't really have any proof who has now damaged the hydrant. So that's basically back on the city to repair that. In this case, we'll get cost estimates and we'll bill those charges to the contractor that had that meter to bring that back up to city standards. So currently, what we're kind of proposing is now kind of two systems. So for the smaller company, a pay-as-you-go so that you can actually go to the water department on airport or out to the treatment plant, and you can come to City Hall. You can tell us how much water you're going to want to purchase and prepay for that. Take your receipt out to one of those locations and fill up. We just want, you know, somebody maybe that really does just need to fill their pool, or somebody that's just in town for a short time that's just needing some quick water. So they really don't need a hydrant meter to give them an option to just go purchase some bulk water as they need it. The customers who do need a meter, what we're proposing now is that they will still come to City Hall, they will pay us the $1,200 deposit, and then we will contact the water department, and they will coordinate with that customer on a hydrant that works best for the customer and does not cause the city any problems. And the water department will actually secure that meter to the hydrant. At that point, it's then the customer's responsibility to make sure that it's protected until they are finished with it. If they move locations and they would like to have the meter moved, then they'll contact us, we'll contact the water department, and they'll reschedule another hydrant that they can then have that meter moved to. And customer service will then actually go read that meter every month. So we'll know the location of that meter, so we'll go by and read it every month. Because the problem is now is more than likely that meter's in the back of somebody's truck or in the shop. So we have no idea where to even go get the reading. Also, those meters is getting bounced around in the back of contractors' trucks that are getting damaged. And then when the customer no longer needs us, they'll contact us, and we'll let the water department know, and we'll go pull that meter then. And then if any damages has been done to the hydrant, then we'll know who to actually bill those charges to.
I take a good question, and maybe it's because I'm not understanding -- I mean, I understand the process.
Right.
But so if there are 20 companies that would want a meter, those would be on 20 separate hydrants?
Yes.
Okay.
And the customer in the water department will determine with the help probably of the fire department of which hydrant would be best suited for them to be able to use.
Okay. What kind of security is there for, if that's the hydrant that I'm paying for, that someone else doesn't come use it?
Well, it's your responsibility to secure that meter so that nobody can turn your valve on. So you can run a change or something through it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's lockable.
What if we need to use it?
It will.
If there's a fire.
It will not be. It's placed, if you look at a standard fire hydrant, there's three nozzles on a fire hydrant, two on the side, and one in the middle. The one in the middle is the pumper nozzle, and that's what the fire department hooks up to. This will be hooked to one of the sides.
Okay.
So it will not impede the use of the fire hydrant in any way, shape, or form of fire protection.
So our plan is kind of, if it passes or you approve, starting tomorrow, any new customer will follow under this process. The 41 customers we currently have, we will notify them and start getting those meters back and getting them checked out and working with the water department to get them on a hydrant that they'll need, which will probably take us about six months because we'll want to kind of phase that in. Obviously, we need time to check out the meters they have and make sure we can get it on a hydrant and kind of go from there.
Do I have any other questions for Ms. Maddox? Or did you have more in the presentation?
No, I just didn't. There's a couple of resolutions. We need to talk about those. Sorry. So the resolution to change our hydrant deposit amount, so upping that from currently at $750 to the $1,200. Also adding the fee for the installation removal of the hydrant meter. So once we install it, and if they want it removed or set somewhere else, so to cover those costs. And then also, if they want to go buy bulk water at the water treatment plant or water department, then there's a $25 per load customer charge just to help recover the cost of the time for that employee going out and getting that, helping them set that meter and monitoring their usage. And then just some updates to the terms and conditions, again allowing that deposit, and then just some other changes while we were cleaning that up that we wanted to add to. One of those was that currently we do this, it just wasn't real clear in terms and conditions that if you're a current customer and you move to another location, that if you leave us with a bill at a current, at that address that you closed, then we can transfer that to your current account to collect those funds. Termination of service, the interest, the city no longer pays interest on deposits, so just cleaning that up in terms and conditions because there will no longer be any, or hasn't been any accrued interest for a while. Also, in the refunding of hydrant deposits, we actually want to hold those to cover any damages that we might have. So currently, if you have a deposit with us, we refund that back to you after 18 months of good service, but we do want to hold those hydrant deposits. Since we've started doing credit card transactions over the last couple of years, we just needed to add in there that if a customer canceled their credit card transaction for some reason, that we could charge them the stop payment fee, just like we do with a return check. And then just clarifying, on our disconnect days for nonpayments, it had originally just said the day before, but we really don't cut the day before or the day of a legal holiday just for, the banks are closed. So for somebody to go get money and try to pay us could be difficult. So we just wanted to add the day of any legal holiday.
Any other questions, Maddox? Okay. And so the real action will be down on the resolutions for this, is that correct?
Yes.
That's wonderful. And I understand, this is your first time to present to City Council, is that correct?
Yes.
I think you did a wonderful job.
Oh, thank you.
So, okay. You have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That's going to take us down to resolutions. And so on those two topics, we do have the two resolutions. We have Resolution 2015-3, admitting the terms and conditions. You can see it run through there. Does anybody have any questions on Resolution 2015-3?
Motion to approve Resolution 2015-3.
Second.
Motion to second to approve 2015-3. And that is approved five to zero. Now Resolution 2015-4. Any questions on it?
Motion to approve Resolution 2015-4.
Second.
A motion to second to approve Resolution 2015-4. That is also approved five to nothing. It's going to take us down to reports from Officer and Boards. Mr. Dorman?
Number of items tonight, sir. Request an executive session pursuant to 25OS subsection 307B3 for the purpose of confidential communication regarding the purchase or appraisal of real property. Items two and three, request an executive session pursuant to 25OS subsection 307B1 for the purpose of confidential communication regarding the employment, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of City Manager Dan Galloway and City Attorney John Dorman. And then finally, a follow-up from our meeting, our last City Council meeting. Tomorrow night, the Planning Commission will take up the issue of the revisions to the oil and gas ordinance. There is a copy of the working draft on the Planning Commission website. It just went up this afternoon. As I understand the process, the Planning Commission will actually hear a presentation tomorrow night and hear public comments. And then they're going to schedule a special meeting for the 10th of February, at which time they will hear some additional comments and start working on a recommendation for the City Council with regard to a new oil and gas ordinance.
Good. Thank you.
So timeframe for back to City Council is?
The 16th.
16th. Okay.
And people can access that website on the city's website, stillwater.org, and search for Planning Commission?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, go to, there's on the front page, there's meetings of council and the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission, and you can look at the agenda and the attachments.
Anything else, Mr. Dorman?
No, sir, that's all.
Okay. Mr. Galloway?
Nothing other at this point.
Okay. Anything from the counselors?
One thing. Excuse me. This is kind of convoluted, but when we have a holiday that falls on a Monday, and we reschedule a meeting to a Thursday, if I have an OSU Board of Regents meeting in another town, I will always be absent. And that's happened to me about three times in the last couple of years. And I would like, you know, I know it's not just about one council member, but I really want to be here when we're taking up important items. And so I'd like to work with staff to perhaps maybe make it a Tuesday or the other councilman, if there's another day we could pick. But if it's on a Thursday prior to an OSU board meeting, and like I said, that's happened at least three times, I will be absent every time. So, I mean, but hey, if y'all are good with that, I'm at peace with it.
Well, we've looked at it too, and Thursday's not, most people are used to us meeting on Monday, and we may look at an alternative as to simply on those months with a holiday to shift to the other Mondays. I think we could do that. Might work better. So we'll certainly take a look.
It's just crazy the way the calendar falls.
I understand.
I know there are two calendars that are completely different, but.
I don't think your calendar is the only one that it doesn't fit well with. It's others, I think.
And for this year with the, you know, we have that, the meeting schedule established, but I think we only have one more of those, Labor Day, I think. And since that's the beginning of the month, hopefully it won't conflict on this one.
And that is one that hit me because it would be the Thursday before.
Oh, it would hit you.
Yeah. Because the first week of September, we always have an.
Ah, okay. Well, we now know there's one. We need to.
So I will be absent.
We may look at, yeah, we could change that one.
I think that we should all, we should all be able to be at the meetings, and I would suggest that we make sure that we can all be.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Work does get in the way sometimes, but we have to.
If that's a known problem, we'll, in advance of that, we'll place an item on the agenda for you to officially cancel the meeting, and then we'll reschedule for an optional day. So we can work with that.
Do you think we forget sometimes that this is volunteer?
I got to go to the paying gig.
Yeah.
Got to take care of.
Hey, John, I wanted to say that I was really happy and proud to be a representative of this city on Saturday. Pat and I, and I'd probably speak for both of us, got to go to the police versus fire benefit basketball game. And it was just so cool to see them giving up their time. I mean, these guys and gals are the hardest workers in our community, and they are giving up their time to benefit someone in our community. And unfortunately this time, it was an officer's son who's had to be benefited, but that's been sick. And so they took up their time and their effort and their money. And I think they raised.
And they raised some serious money.
Eleven thousand plus dollars. And so I just wanted to say how proud I was to be part of this community and to have those people a part of our community and work for our community as well.
Great about.
Thank you.
And protecting us as well.
Thank you, Norman.
And it makes me proud that they protect us as well.
Did Norman play basketball?
Norman didn't.
Chief, did you play?
My, I want to be on the record. My recommendation for next year is a free throw competition between the Chiefs and maybe Norman in there, seeing who's the best. I'm just saying.
And we don't need any blown hamstrings. So let's keep it to free throws. That's wonderful. Okay. The only stuff I have is tomorrow morning for radio, Vice Mayor Weaver is scheduled for KSPI, 8:15, 7:80 a.m. And then Wednesday morning, I'll be doing the doubleheader. We, for TV 31, the morning edition at 7 o'clock, we'll have Ian Grosshahn talking about glass recycling, which I think a lot of people in the community are extremely excited about that. So we need. that, so we need to get those details out to people on the rollout of curbside glass recycling. And then I'll be on triple play at 7:30. That's what we've got going on this week. Got anything for upcoming meetings? Take us down to appointments. Now, right off the top, I just want to tell you, we're going to pull Item C on the appointments, the Medical Center Authority Board. With the trust changes that we approved two weeks ago and the Hospital Board approved, I think it was last week, we've got a new set of rules in place for the appointments to that board. And it has a committee of City Councilors and Hospital Board meeting to help put the slate of nominees together. And that meeting hasn't occurred yet, so we cannot do the appointments for the Hospital Board. So, but we will be getting that put together, so they can have that slating, meeting, and discussion, so we'll get this back on our agenda as quick as we can. That's, that's the hospital.
Can I add that footnote that I mentioned to you today?
Sure.
I just, it came, it caught my attention that we often say that a member whose term has expired, they've expressed a willingness to continue, and we do that very often, and I'm not exactly sure who they express that to. And I think sometimes that person was appointed originally before all the council members had an opportunity to see their application. So I would like for any setting board member whose term is expiring, if they're interested in serving another term, that they submit an updated application along with everyone else. So when you look at all the applicants, you, if you don't know the setting person well, it gives you fair information about all of them. Does anybody see a problem with asking them to do that if they're, if they want to serve another term to submit an updated application? Is that a problem?
I don't know if it's a problem, but I just heard it, and I'm not sure I've thought it all over.
Well, you can think about it.
I think the whole process of applications for boards should be examined for all the boards, and, and how we do it, how we acknowledge people who turn in applications, how we track people who are on boards or people who are just interested in being on boards. I, you know, I think coming out of our discussion last week about encouraging people to be interested in the city and how it works, this is a fabulous place for people to get involved, to see how, just how things do flow. And this creates a pool of people who can also be good, move up to city councillor positions if, if they'd like to, and I would like to see us really think that through well.
I would like to see, if possible, online applications. I think it would be easier for everybody, and maybe if they could be online, so the community could see. We're in online world now, so I would like that.
Wait, you lost me. You mean to get an application, to submit?
And to, and to see who submitted.
Well, that definitely happens on the agendas.
I think that it could be better if it was online all the time, where people could click and see, just like you could click for an application, that you could click to see who's on the board and who submitted applications, and that way the person could know they, the application has been received, and I think it's just really good two-way communication.
Sounds like we've got a lot of conversation to have on the whole appointment process.
Maybe we should, I think we do. Can we put that on the agenda, maybe for an upcoming agenda?
Yeah.
Have I already, have I lost that opportunity?
All right. Well, with all that conversation, there, there were two boards that we've got people that are, their, their terms are up, and we, we, I would like to, I would like to get these people appointed, so these boards can keep doing what they need to be doing. And...
Honestly, I was going to withhold comment on that issue, since we already have the discussion that we seem to be wanting to have. But my bias is if there is someone that has been determined to be qualified either by a prior council or by us and another date, and they're willing to serve again, my default's going to be, why not, instead of scrutinizing them again? We want to encourage participation, and if someone's, I'll say it crazy enough to serve a second term or a third term, let's, let's appreciate that. So, but I do get the sentiment that we should review it.
I think we're stepping beyond our agenda here, getting deeper into the weeds in that conversation, but I think they are all very valid points.
Well, do you have somebody for the Audit Committee?
I, I, I do, so I don't want us to lose those points, I just don't want us to get too far.
I've got a note for a future agenda discussion, so it sounds like it's going to be an item all by itself, so.
Yes, I do have someone I'd like to nominate, and it is, it is a reappointment, by the way, we're talking Audit Committee now, Audit Committee. And Audit Committee has certain requirements to it in each of the spots, and this is one of the spots that is tagged, the special requirement being a, a person in, that's in the business, that owns a business or involved in the private sector business community. And I would nominate John Killiam for reappointment to the Audit Committee for a second term.
I'd second that.
And that is approved five to zero. We also have Airport Authority, and there are three terms. Can I do all, I mean, I was going to, my, my intention is to nominate all three for reappointments. Can that be in one motion?
Yes.
Okay. I would nominate for reappointment Charles Bacon to a second term, Chuck Fleischer to a fourth term, and Russ Tubner to a second term. And that is also approved five to zero. Okay, that is the last item on the City Council agenda, except for the executive sessions, but we're going to recess City Council, and I'm going to call, we'll do the executive sessions at the end of our other meetings. I'm going to call to order the, or February 2nd, 2015 Stillwater Utility Authorities And the first item on the agenda is the Consent Docket, and there are items A through E on the Consent Docket.
Before we progress, I don't, I don't know procedurally, I don't know if I want to pull an item, but I would like to just get a quick update on the power generation station, where we're at. I know several items have come under budget, so I'd like to know if maybe we're...
Pull one from the budget.
Do I need to pull that, or can I, we just get an update?
It's kind of up to the chair.
Mr. Chairman? I would like to either pull the item just to get an update, or if he could just give it, someone in the audience I'm sure is very qualified to give us an update of how we're doing it.
Anyone from the audience, or?
Probably someone on staff, I mean, I see some scouts are still here.
It's not on consent, if you want to discuss.
Pull Item C, D, and/or E.
Okay. I will pull Item D from the Consent Docket.
All right. Does anybody wish to pull any other items from the Consent Docket? Okay, I would like to pull Item B. Okay, any other items? Okay, Items A, C, and E on the Consent Docket, is there a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, boy, hit it.
And that is approved five to zero. Okay, just out of alphabetical order, we'll deal with Item B first. And I, I pulled Item B, and it was a question about the West College Community Development Block Grant and the sewer replacement. Just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm pulling up the reports. Did I read the report correctly in that we've got about $85,000 additional that is being asked for tonight? Does that include the $55,000 offset, or I don't know which term to use, credit from the contractor?
It does. That is, that is after, adjusting for the $55,000 that the, that the contractor negotiated in favor of us, or that we negotiated in favor of ourselves with the contractor. That being the adjustment that we made in light of them finishing so late, the significant impact to our customers in the neighborhood, and the significant time and resources that it took to keep, keep things under control in that area.
Okay. With what's been, with some of those impacts from that, I know we've had conversations about this before, but upcoming contracts on construction, and I was going to say whether it be roads or, in talking, in future water and sewer projects, will the contracts be much more stringent on those, those issues? The, you know, the completion dates, the continuous work, those, those issues?
Yes, sir. The, the contracts always include a substantial and final completion date and a set number for liquidated damages that are assessed when the contractor does not complete the milestones within the time allotted. However, we are planning, actually, we have drafted an adjustment to how we handle pavement replacement and site cleanup that includes requiring the contractor to have no more than X number of feet open at one time, that they have to keep the street closed until the pavement is put back. So that will keep them, that'll require them to keep the train short, keep the caboose close to the engine. They won't be allowed to progress forward until they've cleaned up behind them.
Wonderful, wonderful, all right. Those were the questions I had. Does Rested, the Trust, have any other questions?
Good points.
Okay, thank you. All right. I'd say do, deal with B and then go to D, okay. Is there a motion on Item B from the Consent Docket?
Motion on Item B to approve.
Second. Motion is second to approve Item B from the Consent Docket. And that's approved five to zero. Item D was also pulled. Trustee Nahara?
Yes, yes, sir. If you could just give us a brief, I'm just curious, I feel like we keep seeing several things on here we purchased, and several have come under, so if you could kind of just tell us where we're at, timeframe?
You bet. Good evening, trustees. We are on schedule and under budget. We have been seeing some very favorable, favorable prices come back on our bids. We're releasing a lot of bids right now. So far, all of them have come back very favorable for us, and so that's why, you know, I want this to be as transparent as possible. I hope I don't have to come back someday and it says I'm over budget, you know, of what we thought it was going to cost on certain items, but we're really looking good right now, and so we're seeing those, those savings in the project.
What's completion date?
Completion date, commercial operation date is June 30th of 2016. And we are, we are scheduled to break ground in July of this year. So right now, we're releasing all the construction packages, foundation packages, you know, all the big packages to, to construct the plant. One of them that you just approved in the Consent Docket, the pre-engineered metal building is all the buildings for the plant. And that bid came in well under budget. I mean, we spent a lot of time interviewing the, the potential contractors and, and working out, basically turning every page of the document, can you do this for this? And they have assured us that they can, and that's going to benefit us in the end. So we are under budget, on schedule, and heading down the path.
Any other questions? Mr. Smith? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
All right.
Motion to approve Item D.
Second.
Item D from the Consent Docket is approved five to zero. Okay, that's going to take us down, and here we also have the, the same resolutions as on the City Council agenda, just from the trust standpoint. Do I have to take them individually?
Yes, sir.
All right. We have Resolution SUA 2015-1. Is there a motion on this resolution?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, SUA 2015-1. That's approved five to zero, and now SUA Resolution 2015-2.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second on SUA 2015-2. That's also approved five to zero. Anything from attorney, manager, trustees? One other thing is I kind of want to underline what Mr. Smith was talking about, how things are coming in under budget and how that is going to be very beneficial in the long run, in that the less we spend building the plant, the less is going to be borrowed and the less is going to be paid back. So it's good news.
And the greater portion of the GRDA payment, we get to keep.
There we go. Okay, that's all I've got. Is there a motion to adjourn SUA?
Motion to adjourn SUA?
Second.
That's approved five to zero. SUA is adjourned, and we will call to order the Stillwater Economic Development Authority Meeting for February 2nd, 2015. First item is Consent Docket, two items on the Consent Docket. Anybody wish to pull anything from the Consent Docket?
No, thank you.
Motion to approve the Consent Docket.
Second.
Motion is second to approve SEDA Consent Docket. That is approved five to zero, no other items. Is there a motion to adjourn Stillwater Economic Development Authority?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion is second to adjourn Stillwater Economic Development Authority. That is approved five to zero. SEDA is adjourned, and we will reconvene the City Council meeting. And down on Item 14 on the agenda is the request for executive sessions. Is there, can we take this all in one?
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion to move into executive session as described on the agenda?
Move to move, I move, make a motion to move into executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second. And that is approved five to zero.
Okay. Take the land issue first?
Yeah, let's do land first.